Please note that this is a private meeting. Online. If anyone participating online needs help with Zoom during the meeting, please email Luke Carter at Lucas, L U C A S dot Carter, C A R T E R, at Greensboro dash N C dot gov. Members of the Commission are appointed by City Council and serve without pay. The Commission reviews all original zoning and rezoning requests for the city of Greensboro. Each Commissioner normally visits each site prior to this meeting. The procedure used at all public hearings is as follows. Planning staff presents background information and makes a recommendation. The applicant will present a short summary of how he or she communicated with the neighborhood and why the request is reasonable. Other persons in favor of the request speak for a total of 10 minutes shared with the applicant. Then speakers opposed to the request share another 10 minutes of speaking time. Those in favor of the request share five minutes of rebuttal time. Those in opposition to the request share five minutes of rebuttal time. Any Commission member may ask questions once a presenter has completed their presentation. All Commissioners are required to vote unless they have a conflict of interest. In an effort to run meetings more efficiently, the Planning and Zoning Commission may reorganize the meeting agenda. Cases in which no opposition has been expressed to the Planning Department and which Commission members do not feel necessitate in-depth discussion will be moved to the top of the agenda. Staff will provide a shortened presentation for these expedited cases, and applicants have up to two minutes to address the Commission if they desire to provide any additional information they want the Commission to know. Expedited cases will then follow the procedures outlined previously. All denied cases and all approved ordinances receiving six or more favorable votes will constitute final action unless an appeal is submitted in writing to the Planning Department and the appeal fee is paid within 10 days. All ordinances receiving a majority of favorable votes but less than six will be subject to a public hearing by the City Council. When the case is called that you're interested in, people wishing to speak online will need to use the raise hand function, and you will be called upon to speak in the order in which hands were raised. Please find the raise hand function under the reaction button. People wishing to speak in person will need to come to the podium. When you are called upon to speak, please state your name and address for the record. Please also direct all comments and questions to the zoning commission. Participants in the Zoom meeting will be able to view the meeting and speak when they are called upon. This meeting is being recorded and televised on the Greensboro Television Network. In addition, the telecast is being closed, captioned, for the hearing impaired. It's my understanding that we only have one person registered to speak in opposition to a matter on Stony Point Drive. Otherwise, there is no one here to speak in opposition to any other item on our agenda. If there is somebody that we missed, could you make yourself known right now? Otherwise, we will move all the other matters to our expedited agenda. So I only have one person in opposition to Stony Point. I have no one in opposition to any other matter on our agenda this evening. Thank you. I want to take a moment to thank Mr. Andrew Egbert for his three years of service on Planning and Zoning Commission, and we appreciate all that he did as a member of our Commission. He will be moving out of state later this year, and so was not reappointed, but we have good news, and that is that we have a replacement already in place, and we welcome Betty Turner at my far right to the zoning commission this evening. So right now, I would like to take an opportunity for all the Commissioners present to introduce themselves, starting at my far right. I'm Betty Turner.
I'm Warchey Downing.
Keith Peterson.
Catherine Magid.
Zach Engel.
Mary Skeens.
Paul G. Gilmer, Senior.
Thank you, and Ms. Glass is excused this evening. We also need to have some insights from our City Attorney's Office.
Thank you, Chair O'Connor, and good evening, everyone. Much of the Planning and Zoning Commission's work this evening will relate to the consideration of rezoning applications. I'd like to remind everyone in attendance that when the Commission considers rezoning applications, its determinations are based on the land uses that are allowed under the zoning district that's been put forth in the application and any conditions that have been proposed by the applicant. Land use impacts on public infrastructure are relevant in rezoning matters, and it's important to know that the Commission is not here to determine all details of a development. That process involves staff input and evaluation that goes beyond the scope of the Commission's work this evening. If a rezoning would generate a certain amount of traffic flow, the Commissioners will then provided with a summary traffic impact study. Meanwhile, many site-specific development features, such as the management of stormwater, are evaluated through the Technical Review Committee rather than in this forum tonight. Lastly, concerns that are not related to land use are not germane to the Commission's considerations of rezoning applications. For example, generalized concerns about crime rates, current or anticipated school capacity, and questions of who may own or live at the subject property are not for the Commission's consideration. If there are questions about matters that are not addressed this evening, those may be referred to the Planning Department or to the Technical Review Committee as appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Kirkman, I understand that Matter Z 2406004 has been withdrawn, and Matter Z 2407004 is also removed from our agenda this evening.
Yes, that's correct. The first item, 004, as we're going to lead to 2313 Stanley Road, was withdrawn by the applicant, so no action is needed by the Commission. And the item 07004 regarding property at Mount Hope Church Road and Birch Creek Road, the application is not ready to move forward. There are still some outstanding issues to address with the Unified Development Plan for that item.
Thank you. All the other matters except for Stony Point Drive, which is Z 2406001, are moved to our accelerated agenda, so we'll start with the accelerated agenda, please.
Do you want to approve the minutes?
Thank you. Yes, we need a motion to approve the minutes from May 20th and June 17th, please.
So moved, Catherine Magid.
Thank you, Ms. Magid. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from both meetings. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, those are approved.
That would be the May 20th and the June 17th?
Both.
Okay, good, just making sure.
When I seconded, I seconded both. When you motioned, did you motion both? We're good.
I'm just making sure. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Hang on.
Then our first matter on the accelerated agenda is Z 2406006, a rezoning request from CDCL, Conditional District Commercial Low, and R5 Residential Single Family 5, to PUD Planned Unit Development for the properties identified as 1620YY and 1626 Lovett Street, generally described as west of Lovett Street and north of Freeman Mill Road, 2.94 acres. Mr. Carter?
Thank you, Chair O'Connor. This is the zoning map of the subject property, which contains approximately 2.94 acres. The request is a rezoning request from Conditional District Commercial Low and R5 to Planned Unit Development. You'll notice that to the north is all zoned R5 with single-family dwellings and some undeveloped land to the northwest. To the east and south are office uses, and to the west is the R5 undeveloped land. This is the condition that has been proposed by the applicant. There is also a Unified Development Plan that is associated with this request, and with that Unified Development Plan, Technical Review Committee recommended approval of it with one condition, and that is to show the vehicular access points. In recommending approval of this request, staff notes that the GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan designates this site as urban central on the future built form map, and the Glenwood Neighborhood Plan's future land use map designates this subject property as commercial and residential. The proposed rezoning request supports the comprehensive plans filling in our framework goal to arrange land uses for a more vibrant and livable Greensboro and the creating great places goal to expand Greensboro's citywide network of unique neighborhoods, offering residents of all walks of life a variety of quality housing choices. The proposed PUD zoning district as conditioned would allow new residential uses appropriately placed along a major thoroughfare and compatible with adjacent existing residential uses. The proposed use can provide a good transition from the more intense uses found along Freeman Mill Road and the lower intensity residential uses along Lovett Street. And with that, I can answer any questions that you have.
Are there any questions from Commissioners? No questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. If the applicant is here, you have up to two minutes to add anything staff might have. Thank you. Then without objection, we will close the public hearing. I'll be looking for two motions, one first, one for rezoning, and then secondly, one for the concept on the UDP.
I'll make the motion. I do want to say one thing. We did receive, I believe, one email about this one with regards to traffic, and the only thing I'd like to give feedback to the person that wrote us, this is essentially a downzoning. We're going from a commercial property, even the low-intense use commercial property, down to housing. So in my mind, I think this addresses the concern that you had in the sense that the uses are going to be a lot, in my mind, less intense from that regard than what could be there with the single-family dwellings. So with that, I'll go ahead and just want to make sure that the public sees that we do read what you send us. So in regards to Agenda Item Z-24-06-006, the Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that it is its action to recommend approval of the rezoning request for the properties at 1620YY and 1626 Lovett Street from CD-C-L, Conditional District Commercial Low, and R5 Residential Single Family 5 to PUD Planned Unit Development to be consistent with the adopted GSO 20 Comprehensive Plan and considers the action taken to be reasonable in the public interest for the following reasons. One, the request is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan's future built form map and future land use map. Two, the proposed PUD zoning district as conditioned permits uses that fit the context of the surrounding area and limits the negative impacts on adjacent properties. Three, the request is reasonable due to the size, physical conditions, and other attributes of the area. Will benefit the property owner and surrounding community, and approval is in the public interest.
Second, Commissioner Gil.
Thank you, Mr. Engel and Mr. Gilmer. We have a motion and a second. Any comments? Not will take a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? None, thank you.
I'll also move that we approve the UDP.
Thank you.
With the one condition that came out of TRC.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Engel and Ms. Skeens. We have a motion and a second on the UDP. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? None. This approval constitutes final action unless an appeal is submitted in writing to the Planning Department and the appeal fee is paid within 10 days. Anyone may file such an appeal. All such appeals will be subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, August 19th, 2024 City Council Meeting. All adjoining property owners will be notified of any such appeal. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item Z 2407001, a rezoning request from LI, Light Industrial, to O, Office, for the property identified as 2701 East Market Street, generally described as north of East Market Street and east of Holt Avenue, .13 acres. Mr. Carter?
Thank you, Chair O'Connor. This is the zoning map for the subject property, which is identified as 2701 East Market Street. The request is for rezoning from Light Industrial to Office. North of the request is RM18 with single-family dwellings and other residential uses located north of the request. East of the request is on Light Industrial but contains some residential uses as well. South of the request is both Light Industrial and Heavy Industrial with some distribution and warehouse uses, and then west of the request is Light Industrial with a contractor service at that location. In recommending approval of this request, staff notes that the GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan designates the subject property as urban central and within an urban mixed-use corridor. It is also, the East Market Street reinvestment corridor is also applicable to this on the future built form map. The future land use map designates the property as commercial. The proposed rezoning request supports the comprehensive plans filling in our framework strategy to encourage higher-density infill development and to ensure mixed-use projects both that strengthen and add value to the community and the comprehensive plan's growing economic competitiveness strategy to improve conditions throughout the city and impact social equity and economic disparity by focusing public investments and services in areas of greatest need. The proposed office zoning district is primarily intended to accommodate office institutional and supporting service and residential uses. The uses permitted in the proposed office zoning district are compatible with the existing uses on adjacent tracks and are appropriate within the mixed-use context of the surrounding area. And with that, I can answer any questions that you have.
Do we have any questions? No questions? If the applicant is here and would like to make any additional comments, you're welcome to come to the podium. Excuse me, would you please go to the podium? We'll need your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Ciara Rose. My address is 1303 San Antonio Boulevard in Durham, North Carolina, 27703. I am here on behalf of, I am the Realtor that's representing the owners of 2701 East Market Street. I don't have any comments necessarily, but if there are any questions, I'm here to address them.
Thank you. Do we have any questions?
I just wanted to comment and say thank you for the outreach report, that, you know, the fact that you did this and we don't have anybody here to talk about it actually speaks volumes about your efforts put forward, so appreciate that and thank you for that. And I see that you've got two future people to come to public meetings, and hopefully we'll do them right this evening. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Without further comment, then we will close the public hearing. And I'll look for a motion, please.
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion in regard to Agenda Item Z 2407001. The Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that its action to recommend approval of the rezoning request for the property at 202701 East Market Street from Light Industrial LI to Office O to be consistent with the adopted GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan and considers the action taken to be reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. The request is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan's future built form map and future land use map. The proposed O zoning district permits uses that fit the context of the surrounding areas and limits negative impacts on the adjacent properties. The request is reasonable due to the size, physical conditions, and other attributes of the area. It will benefit the property owner and surrounding community, and its approval is in the public interest.
Second, Commissioner Gil.
Thank you, Mr. Downing and Mr. Gilmer. Any comments or questions? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? None, thank you very much. This approval constitutes final action unless an appeal is submitted in writing to the Planning Department and the appeal fee is paid within 10 days. Anyone may file such an appeal. All such appeals will be subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, August 19th, 2024 City Council Meeting. All adjoining property owners will be notified of any such appeal. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item PLP 24-19 and Z 2407002, an annexation and original zoning request from County RS40 Residential Single Family to City CDO, Conditional District Office, for the property identified as a portion of 5909 West Gate City Boulevard, formerly being a portion of Marion Elsie Drive Right-of-Way, generally described as west of Marion Elsie Drive and north of Scotland Road, .257 acres. Mr. Carter?
Thank you, Chair O'Connor. First item of business on this one, the applicant has requested to revise the conditions just a little bit. From what was presented in the staff report, you'll notice that in condition number one, the last sentence has been replaced with "no elevated structures will be permitted on the parcels identified as 5800 Scotland Road and 5810 Marion Elsie Drive," which are Lot 24 and Lot 25, shown on Flatbook 7, page 154. And then a condition number seven has been proposed to be added. It is, "The subject property shall be developed in conjunction with the portion of 5909 West Gate City Boulevard that was annexed by the city of Greensboro on September 9th of 2023." I can answer any questions about those conditions.
I would move that we accept those additional conditions.
Mr. Gil, a second.
Thank you, Mr. Engel and Mr. Gilmer. All those in favor on accepting the conditions, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? None, thank you. So it's my understanding, Mr. Carter, for clarification, what we're really talking about is just part of Marion Elsie Drive, not the entire parcel.
Yes, ma'am. I wanted to point that out and make that abundantly clear. The property that you see here that is in blue, that is the CDO, that property was subject to an annexation and original zoning in 2023. At that time, Marion Elsie, the Marion Elsie Right-of-Way, went all the way through from Scotland to Queen Alice Road. In the meantime, or since the annexation has been approved, the applicant and the adjacent property owners to the north have requested through the county that the unopened portion of Marion Elsie Drive be closed. When a road is closed, it is split along the center line and then added on to the properties on either side of the right-of-way. So in this situation, the right-of-way that was closed, the northern portion of that right-of-way was added on to the residential properties to the north, and the southern portion has been added on to the applicant's property that is currently in the city and zone CDO. So this request is to get a portion of the applicant's property to match the rest of the property, to come into the city, and then also to have the same zoning on it. And so this is cleaning up the street closure request. So with that, you can see that to the north are residential uses, and they are zoned RS40. Marion Elsie Drive is located to the east, and there are some residential RS40 to the east, and then south and west are CDO, which is the applicant's property. Any questions on that?
We have any questions? None, thank you.
In recommending approval of this request, staff notes that the GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan designates this property as urban general and within an urban mixed-use corridor on the future built form map. The future land use map designates this property as commercial and residential. The proposed original zoning request supports the comprehensive plans growing, I'm sorry, filling in our framework goal to ensure every neighborhood is safe and has a convenient access to first-rate schools, services, shopping, parks, and community facilities. The proposed CDO zoning district as conditioned limits negative impacts on the surrounding neighborhood, and the uses permitted in the proposed office zoning district are compatible with existing commercial, civic, and residential uses located on adjacent tracks. With that, I can answer any questions that you have.
Do we have any questions? No. If the applicant would like to make any additional comments, you can come to the podium, please. You have up to two minutes for additional comments. If you'd give your name and address, please.
Bruce Cantrell, 1000 North Eugene Street, Greensboro. I'm actually the architect representing the owner for this property. We do have the owners represented here tonight, mainly here to answer any questions, but just also give you a little bit of context that the, this is, the second entrance onto our site from Queen Alice was a direct response to a neighborhood request. We originally only proposed one entrance onto the site in response to the neighbor's concerns. We proposed a second entrance, and by closing this part of Marion Elsie, it allows us to have this second entrance directly connect to Queen Alice Road, and also allows us to increase the buffer from our property to the adjacent neighborhood. Of course, the adjacent property owner is in favor of this request, so, and as Mr. Carter stated, the lengthy list of conditions, of course, was in response to the neighborhood meetings that we had, and eventually this would become one parcel, so we wanted the same conditions to be associated with the entire parcels.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Without further comment, then we will close the public hearing. I'll be looking for two motions, one for annexation and one for zoning, please.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make this motion, I'd like to make a motion to annex PLP 24-19, the Marion Elsie Road section.
Thank you, Ms. Magid. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Skeens. We have a motion and a second for annexation. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? None, that carries. Then we need a motion on the zoning, please.
Item Z 24-07-002, the Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that its actions to recommend approval of the original zoning request for the property at a portion of 5909 West Gate City Boulevard from County RS40 Residential Single Family to City CDO, Conditional District Office, to be consistent with the adapted GSO 2040 Comprehensive Plan and considers the action taken to be reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. The request is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan's future build form map and future land use map. The proposed City CDO zoning district as conditioned permits uses that fits the context of the surrounding area and limits negative impacts on the adjacent property. The request is reasonable due to the size, physical conditions, and other attributes of the area. It will benefit the property owner and surrounding community, and approval is in the public interest.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Magid and Mr. Engel. All those in favor, please signify. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? None. This constitutes a favorable recommendation and is subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, August nineteenth, twenty twenty-four city council meeting. Thank you. The next item on our accelerated agenda is Z twenty-four oh seven oh oh three, a rezoning request from R three residential single family three to HI Heavy Industrial for the property identified as two fifteen Standard Drive, a portion of Standard Drive right-of-way and a portion of Railroad right-of-way, generally described as north and south of Standard Drive and east of Little Santee Road, twenty-five point eighty-five acres. Mr. Carter?
Thank you, Chair O'Connor. The subject property is the R three property that you see crosshatched in the middle of the screen.
The donut hole, as I like to call it.
The hole, the donut hole, yes. That's exactly right, yes. And it is, again, addressed to fifteen Standard Drive. Standard Drive is another one of those rights-of-way that don't go all the way through. So that area is also part of the request. And and we will see what happens with Standard Drive moving forward. The property also goes to the center line of of the railroad right-of-way along the north side of the property. And so that is also subject to this rezoning request. So in the surrounding area, you see HI and LI to the north with a mixture of HI and LI all around it, with a mixture of warehouse and distribution uses and manufacturing uses. And there are two motions to be made with this request as it is, oh, I'm sorry, there's just one. It's just the just the, I mean, just the rezoning, I apologize. My fault. "In recommending approval of this request, the GSO twenty forty comprehensive plan designates this property as urban general on the future built form map, and the Western Area Plan's future land use map designates this property as employment area. The proposed original zoning request supports both the comprehensive plans filling in our framework big idea to transform underutilized sites into valued assets that complement their surroundings and the growing economic competitiveness big idea to build a prosperous, resilient economy that creates equitable opportunities to succeed. The proposed HI zoning district is primarily intended to accommodate a wide range of assembly, fabricating or fabrication, and manufacturing activities. The proposed zoning district allows uses that are compatible with the existing workforce and manufacturing uses on adjacent properties." And I can answer any questions that you have at this time.
Do we have any questions? No questions. If they would prefer, the applicant has up to two minutes to make any additional comments. Somebody make sure the clock is running, please, for two minutes. Thank you. If you'd give your name and address.
Brian Pierce, eight hundred Green Valley. I'll just mention quickly on the Standard Drive, because you're going to see that in the near future. We were, we've just been delayed on that, waiting on the neighbor to see if they wanted to join us and cutting it off. We haven't been able to get a response from them at this point, so it's getting submitted, so you'll see that in the near future. But as Mr. Engel mentioned, this really is filling the donut hole. Thanks.
Thank you. We have a minute thirty-five seconds remaining. If there's anyone else in favor of the applicant. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll look for a motion, please.
Commissioner, please, I'd like to make a motion on item Z twenty-four dash oh seven zero zero three. "The Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that its action to recommend approval of the rezoning request for the properties at two-one-five Standard Drive, a portion of Standard Drive right-of-way, and a portion of the Railroad right-of-way from R three residential single family three to HI Heavy Industrial to be consistent with the adopted GSO twenty forty comprehensive plan and considers this action taken to be reasonable and in the public's best interest for the following reasons. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan's future built form map and future land use map. The proposed HI zoning district permits uses that fit the context of surrounding area and limits negative impacts on adjacent properties. The request is reasonable due to the size, physical condition, and other attributes of the area. It will benefit the property owner and surrounding community, and approval is in the public best interest."
Second, Commissioner Gilmer.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson and Mr. Gilmer. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? None. This approval constitutes final action unless an appeal is submitted in writing to the planning department, and the appeal fee is paid within ten days. Anyone may file such an appeal. All such appeals will be subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, August nineteenth, twenty twenty-four city council meeting. All adjoining property owners will be notified of any such appeal. Thank you. The next item on our accelerated agenda is Z twenty-four oh seven oh oh five, a rezoning request from P U D Planned Unit Development to P U D Planned Unit Development for the properties identified as two thousand three Generations Lane, nineteen fifteen and nineteen thirty-one Little Valley Way, generally described as north of Green Valley Road and east of Lindu Street, eleven point nine seven seven acres. Mr. Carter?
Thank you, Chair O'Connor. This is the zoning map for the subject property. The subject property is the crosshatched area at the center of the map, currently zoned P U D. The rezoning request is, it is currently a P U D zoning district. They are requesting to change some of the conditions and increase intensity slightly, and that is the need for the rezoning request. With this, there is also a unified development plan that will need to be, there will need to be a motion on that one as well. In the surrounding area, you can see office, light industrial, and commercial medium to the north with office uses and auto, there's auto repair located to the north. There's to the east, public and institutional, office, and commercial medium with a mix of medical uses, retail uses, and child childcare services. To the south is Business Park, which has large, large office buildings at that location, multi, multi-unit office buildings. And then public and institutional to the west, which is a medical office building. These are the conditions that have been proposed with this request. And this is the unified development plan that was also proposed with the request. "In recommending approval of the request, staff notes that the GSO twenty forty comprehensive plan designates this property as urban general on the future built form map and commercial on the future land use map. The proposed rezoning request supports the comprehensive plans filling in our framework goal to arrange land uses for more vibrant and livable Greensboro and the creative, creating great places goal to expand Greensboro's citywide network of unique neighborhoods, offering residents of all walks of life a variety of quality housing choices. The proposed P U D zoning district as condition would allow a mix of appropriately dense uses that have an intensity generally compatible with the surrounding area. Care should be taken with respect to building orientation, building materials, building height, visual buffers to ensure an appropriate transition to the adjacent uses." And I can answer any questions that you have.
Do we have any questions? I'm surprised GPS didn't call you because they couldn't find Little Valley Way.
Yeah, that officially has been changed in our GIS and in our records, but that probably hasn't made it to Google yet.
Right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? We have none. The applicant has up to two minutes if you'd like to make any additional comments. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. I'll look for two motions, one for zoning and then one on the U D P.
I'll just simply start by saying that the reason we're doing this tonight is two thousand additional square feet of patio space, right? Okay. Here we go. "In regards to agenda item Z dash twenty-four dash zero seven dash zero zero five, oh, no, we'll do this and then the U D P."
The zoning first.
Zoning first, then U D P. I'm almost out of here. "The Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that its action to recommend approval of the rezoning request for the properties at two thousand three Generations Lane, nineteen fifteen and nineteen thirty-one Little Valley Way from P U D Planned Unit Development to P U D Planned Unit Development to be consistent with the adopted GSO twenty forty comprehensive plan and considers the action taken to be reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. One, the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan's future built form map and future land use map. Two, the proposed P U D zoning district as condition permits uses that fit the context of the surrounding area and limits negative impacts on the adjacent properties. Three, the request is reasonable due to the size, physical conditions, and other attributes of the area will benefit the property owner and surrounding community, and approval is in the public interest."
Commissioner Gilmer, second.
Thank you, Mr. Engel and Mr. Gilmer. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? None. Thank you.
I'll now make a motion to approve the U D P.
Commissioner Gilmer, second.
Thank you, Mr. Engel and Mr. Gilmer. A motion to approve the U D P. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? None. This approval constitutes final action unless an appeal is submitted in writing to the planning department, and the appeal fee is paid within ten days. Anyone may file such an appeal. All such appeals will be subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, August nineteenth, twenty twenty-four city council meeting. All adjoining property owners will be notified of any such appeal. Thank you. The next item on our expedited agenda is items P L P twenty-four dash twenty and Z twenty-four dash oh seven dash oh oh six, an annexation and original zoning request from County PI Public and Institutional to County RS forty residential single family to CD PI, to City CD PI, conditional district public and institutional for the properties identified as nineteen fifteen and nineteen fifteen ZZ Harris Drive and four-nine-two-four Old Randleman Road, generally described as south of Harris Drive and west of Old Randleman Road, twenty point nine four acres. Mr. Carter?
Thank you, Chair O'Connor. This is the zoning map for the subject property, which doesn't show much information, many colors anyway, because it is an annexation. You'll notice that to the north of the request is County Ag and County RS forty with single-family dwellings and undeveloped land along the north side of the property. To the east is County RS forty, and there's a mix of single-family dwellings, a convenience store with fuel pumps, and a vacant non-residential structure to the east. And to the south is also County RS forty and some County PI. There's a religious assembly used to the south and single-family dwellings. And to the west is County RS forty and County Ag, and also undeveloped land and single-family dwellings. This is the condition that has been proposed by the applicant. And in recommending approval of this request, staff notes that the GSO twenty forty comprehensive plan designates this property as ex-urban on the future built form map. And if the original zoning is approved, the future built form map will be updated for the subject property, and it will be considered urban general from that point on. The future land use map designates the property as residential and commercial. And the proposed original zoning request supports both the comprehensive plans filling in our framework big idea to arrange our land uses for where we live, work, and attend school, shop, and enjoy our free time to create a more vibrant and livable Greensboro. The proposed CD PI zoning district would limit permitted uses to the educational facilities use group, and the uses permitted under the request are broadly compatible with the existing uses on the property and in the surrounding area. And with that, I can answer any questions that you have.
Do we have any questions? We have two minutes available for the applicant. If you'd like to make any additional comments, if you'd come to the podium and identify yourself, please.
Madam Chair, board members, thank you. I'm Donna Bell with Guilford County Schools Planning Department. We're at six seventeen West Market Street in Greensboro. We don't have any additional presentation. We were just here with some other staff members to answer any questions that anyone might have. This is our Sumner Elementary School site. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions, Mr. Engel?
Just just a comment, really. You all do a fantastic job of communicating with the public, and it's consistent. This is about the third one that I've seen come through here. You have a great system, and I appreciate it more than you know. I know this site well. My friend has a balloon port just down Old Randleman Road near Steeplechase. And so I've driven around and through and all over the place around there. And again, I just really appreciate the fact that the communication went out as detailed as it did. It makes our job a lot easier. So thank you, and we look forward to seeing a lot more schools.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We appreciate all your support as well. Thank you.
Okay, and with that, we will close the public hearing. I'm looking for two motions, one for annexation and one on zoning.
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion on the zoning, I'm sorry, annexation at P L P twenty-four one twenty.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Downing and Mr. Engel. We have a motion for the annexation. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Thank you. And then a motion on the zoning.
Also, I'd like to make a motion in regard to item Z twenty-four zero seven zero zero six. "The Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that its action to recommend approval of the original zoning request for the property at one-nine-one-five and one-nine-one-five ZZ Harris Drive and four-nine-two-four Old Randleman Road from County PI Public Instruction and Institutional and County RS forty residential single family to City CD PL conditional district public and institutional to be consistent with the adopted GSO twenty forty comprehensive plan and considers the action taken to be reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan's future built form map and future land use map and the proposed, I'm recovering, the proposed City CD PL zoning district and conditions as conditions permit uses that fit the context of surrounding areas and limits negative impacts on the adjacent properties. The request is reasonable due to the size, physical conditions, and other attributes of the area. It will benefit the property owner and surrounding community, and approval is in the public interest."
Commissioner Peterson, second.
Thank you, Mr. Downing, Mr. Peterson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? None. Thank you. This constitutes a favorable recommendation and is subject to a public hearing at the Tuesday, August nineteenth, twenty twenty-four city council meeting. That concludes our expedited agenda. We do have a street closing later, but for now, we will revert to our regular agenda. And so the next item before us is P L P twenty-four fifteen and Z twenty-four oh six oh oh one, an annexation and original zoning request from County RS forty residential single family to City CDR seven, conditional district residential single family seven for the property identified as three-one-nine-six ZZ Stony Point Drive, generally described as north of Stony Point Drive and east of Liberty Road, two point four-two-six acres. Mr. Carter?
Thank you, Chair O'Connor. This is the zoning map of the subject property, which shows that the property is approximately two point four-two-six acres and is located north of Stony Point Drive and east of Liberty Road. This is an annexation and original zoning request from County RS forty to City CDR seven. North and west of the request are zoned RS forty. East of the request is zoned County RS forty and County RS three. South of the request is zoned County RS three. This is the aerial map of the subject property. The property is currently undeveloped. North, east, south, and west of the request all contain single-family dwellings. This is an image of the subject property as seen from Stony Point Drive. This image shows a single-family... This image shows a single-family dwelling located north of the request on Liberty Road, zoned County R S forty. This image shows undeveloped land located northeast of the request on Spring Mill Road, zoned County R S forty. This image shows a single-family dwellings located east of the request, zoned County R S three. And this image shows a single-family dwelling located south of the request on Stony Point Drive, zoned County R S three. This image shows another single-family dwelling located south of the request, zoned County R S three. And this image shows a single-family dwelling located west of the request on Liberty Road, zoned County R S forty. This view is facing north on Stony Point Drive. The subject property is at the end of the road, off the end of the road. And this view is facing south on Stony Point Drive. From this view, the subject property is directly behind you. This is the condition that was proposed by the applicant. And staff recommends approval of this request, noting that the GSO twenty forty comprehensive plan designates this site as urban general on the future built form map and residential on the future land use map. The proposed original zoning request supports both the comprehensive plan's creating great places goal to expand Greensboro's citywide network of unique neighborhoods, offering residents of all walks of life, a variety of quality housing choices, and the building community connection strategy to work to ensure the quality, quantity, and diversity of housing choices across and between neighborhoods. The proposed C D R seven zoning district as condition limits uses to a maximum of ten residential lots. This request would permit uses that are compatible with those on existing tracks. And this request would also allow greater flexibility for individual lot configuration with small increase in residential density. With that, I can answer any questions that you have.
Do we have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
The applicant can have up to ten minutes if you'd come to the podium and identify yourself.
Good afternoon. Hugh Latham, twenty-five-hundred Wilpar Drive, Greensboro. We sent our letters on July the third to the list that was provided by the city. I think it was approximately seventy-four names. Of the seventy-four names, one came back. We held a Zoom meeting on July the tenth at six o'clock from six to seven. We had two people to log on for the Zoom meeting, and several questions came up. One question, or three questions I'd like to answer right now. One was, how close were the houses going to be to the existing property land? They're thirty-one, I think thirty-one ninety-six and thirty-one ninety-seven. Yeah, thirty-one ninety-seven Stony Point and thirty-one ninety-six, no, Stony Point. Or as far as thirty-one ninety-six, I think is to the right. From their property land, past the green space, past the fifty feet setback for the street, plus the setback for the house, it's approximately eighty-five feet. On the left-hand side, it's approximately sixty-five feet. We arranged it like this to make sure we gave adequate space and separation to facilitate a better blending of the neighborhood, because the densities are different. But also, we have a huge green space being provided, that we plan to provide for picnic tables and others. Another question came up about lighting. Normally, you have a street light at the end of the street. I am quite sure there would be one at the, on both ends of the street. And the other one was turnaround. Since we'd be in the city, and garbage truck would be coming down Stony Point Drive, the permanent turnaround on the right-hand side is per the Greensboro Fire Department, that it must be adequate to turn around a complete ladder truck. So I'm quite sure that'd be large enough to facilitate turnaround of a garbage truck. And there were others. One was the condition of Stony Point Drive, which I remember is a state road, which I really have no control over. But I was, one time I talked to the state office on Yanceville Street. They said it was in their maintenance plan for twenty twenty-five. I'm not sure that still is current or not. We also, I mean, there's a letter we mailed out. You want to turn it over? We mailed these let out, that we tried to explain what we were doing, and some of the attributes of the houses. They were arranged from two thousand to twenty-eight hundred square feet, two stories. And because of topography, most would have a partial walkout basement and a two-car garage. There's a large green space being provided for separation. And per the city requirement, we have a large sand filter on the right-hand side that will for stormwater reclamation and process. There were other issues that came up, but I didn't know how to answer them. And so that's basically what we have. I've been developing, I've been building houses for, I guess, twenty-two years. I have another subdivision at Neilltown Estates off Neilltown Road, twenty-eight lots. We've built approximately twenty-eight houses. We have one lot emptying. So this is, we're looking forward that this will be our next project for next year. We're trying to get the infrastructure completed this year, weather permitting, and that's why we're trying to expedite the process.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Latham?
I just have one question about the egress. You know, could you show your... Thank you. So the one for Stony Point, I can see connects to Stony Point Drive that is there, but then you have something to the right. Is that just, it doesn't attach to anything? It's just an area so that the trucks can back up into that? Is that what you're saying?
Well, that's a requirement of the city. That's a city requirement.
So is that what that is?
Yes, that's a turnaround for the fire trucks. And that's for ladder truck. That's not just for regular fire truck. That's a, that's a, it's called a permanent turnaround. On the left-hand side is a temporary turnaround, because there is land available to eventually possibly go to Liberty Road, that one house.
Any other questions? I want to thank you, Mr. Latham, for all your neighborhood outreach and for your communication with the neighbors.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, we have five minutes and forty-one seconds remaining. If anyone else would like to speak in favor of the application. If not, we have available ten minutes for anyone who wants to speak in opposition. If you'd come to the podium and identify yourself, please. If you'd give your name and address, please.
Good evening. I'm Deisha McCarthy Grant Jeffries, and my address is three-one-nine-seven Stony Point Drive, Greensboro, North Carolina, two-seven-four-zero-six. Please bear with me. I'm not used to speaking to a distinguished panel like this. I am a physician's assistant with pathology and oncology data specialist. So for me, I deal with dead people, body parts, and cancer data. So I'm not used to speaking in public. I should have took more, paid more attention in my public speaking classes. I'm opposed of this, so I wrote down everything, just so I can kind of have key points and stay on task. Hopefully, I don't repeat anything. But I'm opposed of this development. My home is the home that's at the far right corner, where the turnabout is where you question that permanent turnabout. That is actually my backyard. So that area right there is a concern for me. We are congested already on Stony Point Drive. The pictures that they've given are pictures during the day and not at night. Adding multiple homes at that end would cause possibly more traffic, more cars. And I know they don't have any control over that, but that is a concern for me. Also, that increased traffic would cause a significant risk to our children that play in the neighborhood. The presence of the construction trucks, the equipment out there, to me, is a concern. The road is not, it's repaired, but it's not a properly repaired road. And just that heavy equipment coming in the road that's already kind of wavering is a concern for me. And then also, just the disturbance of it. My second job as an oncology data specialist, I work from home. So it's just, it'll just be a big disturbance with the construction of all of that, from my standpoint. Since Mr. Latham opened up that area, there's been cars sitting there doing God knows what. And I feel like even with that turnabout, there'll be a concern for that, especially now in my backyard, where that permanent turnabout is. So there'll be potentially cars sitting back there, and I would have to surveillance now my backyard. As he mentioned, there was concern about the trash pickup. The trash, the garbage trucks, any fire trucks, any buses that come through there, they can only come down and back up, or they can back in and pull out. So even with that turnabout, it doesn't seem conducive to me that there's enough space to even turn around in that area. So I'm concerned about that as well. Also, I haven't heard of or received any type of traffic study. There is concern with a lot of traffic in that area, especially at Liberty Road and Edgemont. There's been multiple accidents there. I don't have any statistics on that, but I'm sure it's probably in the record somewhere. And he mentioned about the notification to the neighborhood. Myself and my neighbor across the street, the two that will be directly affected by this were the only two that were on the call. And out of seventy-four, seventy-five letters, it just doesn't seem likely that no one else in the community would want to know about the changes that's coming about. So I, I don't want to say that I disbelieve it, but it just seems so less likely that the only two that was involved or in the call were the only two on the call. I just feel like that there should have been a little bit more time. It was, it was rushed, as far as the community involvement. It was during the holiday week. I don't even know who got it. My neighbor that was here last month said that he didn't get a letter from Mr. Latham. He did get the notification from the city. And even with the notification from the city, from what I read, there was a error on it. But there was a date error on that notification, that I can stand corrected if someone wants to look at that. Outside of that, that home I bought as a single parent, I bought that home, built a treehouse in the backyard, just so my daughter at the time, she's twenty-nine now, but just so my daughter at the time could have that opportunity to be outside and explore her imagination. I really would like for that community, which is quiet, established, well-established, because it was there before, of course, I came along, but well-established neighborhood will continue to be established and quiet. I want the opportunity to be able to have my grandchildren use that treehouse someday. I don't have any grandchildren yet, but prayerfully, I want that to happen without having that community over there on that side. I purchased that home just for that reason, just for that. That's my forever home, and that's what I purchased just for that reason. I know Mr. Latham mentioned that there would be increase in the tax or in the value of my home, but then there'll be increase in the taxes as well. So just the thought of that, I know taxes and death are the only things that are guaranteed, but if I can slow that down at any rate, I would. Also, I just wanted to finish with just the fact that I know change is inevitable, but I don't think that the community was involved as much as they should be. The communication from my vantage point was just to myself and the person, my neighbor across the street, and that it was not an inclusive meeting that I felt, which, you know, can go here or there, was was done in due diligence. So I can stop there.
Thank you.
I would just note, it looks like, and I've got a copy of the notice that went out, and I think the confusion may be that it's listed as two dates. You've got a meeting tonight. So every, every time that we do an annexation, it has to be approved at two levels. It comes here, and we make a recommendation, basically, do we annex the property, do we not? And you've probably seen us do that a couple of times tonight. The next thing that we do is we give a recommendation on what we think the zoning will be. We don't get final say on this one. So there's a meeting tomorrow night with the city council, and I'm assuming, and staff can stop me at any time if I'm incorrect on this, but it lists here, yes, there's a, basically, a July sixteenth city council meeting. They will have the final approval on this item. So tonight, we're gonna, we'll, you know, we've heard from you, we'll hear again from Mr. Latham, we'll probably hear again from you, make a decision on that, so that they will make the final decision. So that may be the confusion on the noticing. The first time I saw it, I looked at it, I was like, this one says the sixteenth, this one says the fifteenth, but that's, that's what it is. There's literally two meetings because of an issue that we had last month with this item, so.
Yes, and I understand that, but on the second paragraph of the meeting notification that I received, it said if you would like to participate in the Monday, June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four meeting virtually. So that's the date that...
And we were here. That was last month. So you actually got two notifications?
Yes, so...
Because we actually heard this case twice. Mr. Latham was here last month, and your neighbor.
Correct. And I was online last month, waiting to come in and speak last month. However, I didn't get that. So I guess that's kind of confusing, because the June seventeenth Monday meeting had already passed, but this was concerning the July fifteenth and July seventeenth meeting.
And you can attend the July sixteenth meeting at the city council and also speak?
Okay.
Just a recommendation.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We have two minutes and twelve seconds remaining for anyone else that wants to speak in opposition.
Chair O'Connor, Carla Jackson, online, would be willing to speak.
Thank you. If you turn on your camera and identify yourself with your name and address, please. If you turn on your camera and identify yourself with your name and address, please.
Chair O'Connor, Ms. Jackson is not responding currently in Zoom.
Okay. We'll have another five minutes of rebuttal time in a few moments. Um, so now we have rebuttal time. So if the applicant or anyone in favor would like to speak, you have up to five minutes. If you'd come back to the podium, please. If you don't mind, if you'd give your name and address again. Thank you.
Hugh Latham, twenty-five-hundred Willport Drive. Uh, one of the concerns she stated was the buses and the trucks. And one of the reasons they have to bag down the street, there's no turnaround there at the end. By adding Stony Point Drive, Stony River Drive, buses and trucks can now pull in, turn around, and pull back out, which they can't currently do. And, uh, I guess that's about it.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Peterson?
Thank you, Mr. Latham. So the turnaround will be in the front of the entrance of the property or down to the right?
Just down to the right.
So it'd be down to the right?
Yeah, you could pull in, turn, go down to the right.
Commissioners, if I, if I may, I apologize, I hate to interrupt. I just want to gently remind the board, you know, we're, we're looking at a broad rezoning question related to land use. We don't want to dive too deep into any specifics of site development. That's a little outside our scope here this evening. I just want to gently remind the board that before we move, um, to some of our, uh, discussion.
Thank you, yeah. And just as a reminder, and so the public also understands, this is a concept drawing, but if we approve or not, the, the person's not bound to the concept, it's just an idea he's giving. So you have yours designed right now.
Chair O'Connor, if I may. This is basically the design that has been submitted. Uh, uh, excuse me. We've had one technical review meeting, and this basically is the design. It's not going to vary too much more. The only question is that we, that may or may not change is the parallel park on Stony River Drive that, that setback, we did that to make, to reduce the congestion for folks who park on Stony River Drive, that you would have, uh, when you park, parallel park, you would have additional space between the street and the house.
Thank you. Mr. Tipton?
I was just going to add that for the, for the commission, just to know that we do require turnarounds based on if it's permanently kind of block off, that you will never go through again. We do require turnaround that will handle a ladder truck, which is a very large fire truck. But other than that, the, this catch is a lesser difficulty. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right.
We still have, uh, four, Ms. Gaines, sorry, sir, Mr. Latham. Come on back. You stated earlier that you had sent out, uh, letters to seventy-four people from the list that the city had provided.
Yes, ma'am. I mailed seventy-four, uh, seventy-five letters, one returned. And we had two people to sign on the Zoom meeting. And you know, with Zoom, you can see how many folks are, are currently on the meeting. And there was only two. I waited, we held, we started at about, I guess, five out to six to wait the folks show up and to log on. And we stayed, uh, I stayed online until, in seven oh two. And there was only two people that decided to log on.
I got that.
Okay.
The Zoom information as to how to log into the Zoom meeting was in the letter that you sent out to those seventy-four people, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So seventy-four people had the information to log on.
Yes, ma'am.
But you only had two to log on.
Yes, ma'am.
And, but that was just, that was their choice.
That's their choice. And we gave two different information. We gave the QR code, and we also gave the direct, I guess, link
Yeah.
to the Zoom meeting.
But just, just to clarify that, that there were actually seventy-three people that had the ability to log into that Zoom meeting, had they so chosen to do that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Madam Chair, do you have?
Mr. Latham.
Oh, well, I do have a question in regard to, um, thirty-one ninety-seven and thirty-one ninety-six. Those properties are, yes. So are, are there considerations in city, correct me if I'm wrong, are there considerations for buffers if needed for those particular property lines if, you know, if there are going to be more traffic or infringement upon one's property?
So required buffers are based upon different intensities of land use. So this is single family against single family. So there's no minimum tree conservation or buffers required under the C's ordinances.
Okay, okay.
But we do provide a approximately thirty-two feet buffer between that property line before you even access the city street. So if you add the buffer plus the fifty-foot easement for the street, plus the setback for the house, it's approximately ninety feet, ninety-five feet on one side and about sixty-five, seventy feet on the other side.
Okay.
Any other questions? We'll try to let you sit down, Mr. Latham.
Excuse me, ma'am?
We'll try to let you sit down.
Okay.
Thank you. We also have five minutes available rebuttal time if anyone wants to speak in opposition.
Chair O'Connor, Ms. Jackson still having technical difficulties.
We have the person online?
She is online, but she cannot activate her microphone or camera.
Okay, why don't we give first?
Does she want to type any comments then? While we're hearing from the other?
I'll ask Ms. Jackson.
If you'd give your name and address again, please. I'm sorry.
Deisha McCarthy Grant Jeffries at three-one-nine-seven Stony Point Drive, Greensboro, two-seven-four-zero-six. Ms. Latham did mention, because I know this is a recorded, um, meeting, that he did submit seventy-four, but only two had the QR code. And I think that was the two that was on our letter, because we were the only two that were on the call. Um, also, he mentioned about the buffers. That buffer between conversations and even the meeting last month has changed. Um, first it was ten feet, then it was twenty feet, now it's thirty-two, as he states today. So, you know, I'm not sure if this, this is going to change once this is approved. And that's my vantage point is, um, you know, once this is approved, he can pretty much do whatever he wants to do within that property. Um, so if it was maybe two homes or three homes, you know, I, I may feel better about that, but to have nine homes and then that turnaround be right there in my backyard, um, I'm just not certain of moving forward with this. I just, again, feel like it was rushed and it wasn't communicated well with the community.
Ms. Gaines, did you have something? Thank you. Do we have our online person?
Chair O'Connor, Ms. Jackson has left the meeting and she did not have any comments.
I didn't understand what you.
Sorry, ma'am. Uh, she did not have any comments before she left.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anyone else who wants to speak in opposition?
Sorry, Chair O'Connor, she just rejoined.
She just rejoined the meeting.
Yes, ma'am. She is tempted to connect to audio.
If you'd like to speak and identify yourself with your name and address, please, we have three minutes and twenty-three seconds remaining. Appears that our online person's not able to participate.
Chair O'Connor.
Hello?
Yes.
Oh, you can hear me now? You might not see me, but at least you can hear me. My name is Carla Jackson.
Would you give your name and address, please?
My name is Carla Jackson, and I live at thirty-one ninety-six Stony Point Drive.
Thank you.
Um, I do have a lot of questions about the road. They did patch up Stony Point, but it's not a working road coming in and out of the facility. Um, I want to know why the zone meeting sign wasn't placed at the front of Liberty Valley so the whole community could know that there was a zoning effort going on. When the Curry people had the zoning lot across on Am's, uh, Am's, not Am, yes, Am'sley, near that area, they had three zoning signs out so that when you drove up and down that road, you understood about the zoning. The zoning signs were put in my yard, and I moved them because I didn't think that was fair. But I don't know your ruling and whatever it is, and I figured out it was the last house on that side. So my question is, to let the neighborhood know that this was coming, two zoning signs should have been placed at the entrance of Liberty Valley and entrance of where the, um, homes are being built. There are children on this end, there are a lot of cars on this end. Um, those pictures didn't show the actual seven or eight all on the street when, after people come in. Um, the timing for the meeting, I don't know if the people didn't understand, but the zoning sign, if it had have been placed, I believe more people would have been involved in what was going on. Um, also, I'm concerned about the runoff. Is that a, like a little sand area? Is that going to be a pond area? So you're going to have to have that. And then our children wouldn't be able to come and play in that area because we're not a part of the HMO, which I don't want to be a part of. So those things are my concern about the entrance of coming one way in and one way out. I know we have it now, and it's very sticky. You, there's no other entrance in this Liberty Valley section but that one main street. Not Stony Point, but the main street out in the front. If we had another gateway out of this entrance, it would be good because you're adding more people. You got the seventy, plus this is eighty more people in this section to mover in and out. So that's my concern about building the houses here. And I do not want them up on our lots. Um, but myself and Miss Stacia, we don't want the houses built on our lots, which I see that he's going to put them in a straight row. And I think it needs to be less than ten. It needs to either be seven.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson.
You're welcome.
That concludes our speaking time. Maybe staff could clarify for us about placement of signs on zoning sites?
Yeah, I'd be happy to address that. Uh, state law requires that the zoning sign be placed on the subject property. So that is why it would not be placed at a intersection nearby. Uh, the sign is one of the ways in which the hearing is advertised. The, uh, mail notice to all property owners within seven hundred and fifty feet is one of the other ways it's done that. So the idea is that you could ca- catch folks through the multiple means of communication on there.
And the state requirement.
We can't put signs on other people's property.
Yeah, the state requirement for notification is, the sign itself has to be out between ten.
The state requirement for the mail notification is. Right, but both of those are between ten and twenty-five days prior to the hearing.
The state, the foot, the amount of radius.
Oh, well, the state just requires adjacent property.
That's right. So the state only requires that you would have to notify the two adjacent, or the four, five adjacent.
Correct, right.
The city requirement is seven hundred and fifty feet.
Seven hundred and fifty feet, which would actually get most of this neighborhood. Uh, yes, they'll get the map, it'll look like.
Yeah.
Caught all the certain Stony Point properties.
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, we will close the public hearing. All the speaking time has been used. Do we have any questions or comments from commissioners?
Well, that, that's what I was saying earlier. So, uh, required buffers are related to different types of land uses. So you would have, say, multifamily against single family or commercial against multifamily. In this case, it's single-family development against single-family development, so there's no buffer requirement under the ordinance.
If, if this was going to be RM five, for instance, and they were going to put condos back there, there would be some kind of buffer requirement. But because this is, and, you know, single-family to single-family, then it, it would just be like somebody building onto your neighborhood or my neighborhood. It would be.
Setbacks.
Setbacks, and that's it, yeah.
Thanks so much. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Gilmer?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, I will be supporting, uh, Z dash twenty-four-six dash zero-zero-one-one. The property is not, it's vacant property and it's going to be built on. So I think that the, uh, the applicant, uh, has did what he needed to do, so I, uh, I will have to support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmer. We'll be looking for two motions, one for annexation and then one for zoning.
I'll just make, I'll make a comment as well. Um, this is a, a, I, I feel a lot more comfortable with what I'm seeing here tonight than what we had last, last month. And, and the reason being for the two meetings is because we had an application before us last month that was not conditioned. And so with two and a half acres and an R-seven zoning, that could have been fourteen or fifteen houses. And so I, you know, I think it was prudent, um, for the applicant to come back. Uh, we have something for us right now that's basically, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, about four units to the acre, um, which the city's minimum, uh, standard for building is three. So I, I feel like this is a good project. I'll be supporting it. Um, and I, I think that there's still some opportunity for things to be worked out. I, I will say, just a couple of the questions that came up, traffic study. Until we get to about a hundred units, we don't require traffic studies. There's just, there's a ton of cost that goes into that. And quite frankly, for the same use at the end of the road, it, it would be, you'd be basically just making it too expensive to, to develop anything. So, um, again, I'll be supporting it, and I think it'll be a good infill project in that area.
I'd like to make a motion if we're at that point, Madam Chair. I'd like, item Z twenty-four dash zero-six.
Uh, we need to do the annexation first.
Oh, I'm sorry. We want to annex, wait, let me look and see what the number is. I'm sorry. Um, P L P twenty-four dash fifteen, I'd like to, uh, um, make a motion to annex that into the city.
Thank you.
Second, Commissioner Gilmer.
Thank you, Ms. Maggott and Mr. Gilmer. We have a motion and a second for annexation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Now we'll look for the motion, please.
Thank you. Item Z twenty-four dash zero-six dash zero-zero-one. The Greensboro Planning and Zoning Commission believes that its action to recommend approval of the original zoning request for the property at thirty-one ninety-six ZZ Stony Point Drive from County RS forty residential single-family to City C D R seven conditional district residential single-family seven to be consistent with the adopted G S O twenty-forty comprehensive plan and considers the action taken to be reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan's future build form map and future land use map. The proposed City C D R seven zoning district, as conditioned, permits uses that fits the context of the surrounding area and limits negative impact on the adjacent properties. The request is reasonable due to the size, physical conditions, and other attributes of the area. It will benefit the property owner and the surrounding community, and approval is in the public interest.
Second, Commissioner Gilmer.
Thank you, Ms. Maggott and Mr. Gilmer. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? This constitutes a favorable recommendation. And in this case, it's exceptional because of some of the issues we had. Uh, this will, is subject to a public hearing tomorrow, Tuesday, July sixteenth, twenty-twenty-four, at a city council meeting. Thank you.
I, I would like to commend staff for, uh, working through this, um, in, in what I think is a fairly, uh, expeditious way. Um, it speaks to the professionalism of what you all were able to do. Thank you for that.
We have one item on our agenda yet for a street closing. Item P L P twenty-four dash twenty-one. Request to close Ireland Street between ten-twenty and eleven-hundred South Elm Street, approximately twenty-five feet. Mr. Carter?
Thank you, Chair O'Connor. Uh, this is the subdivision plat that created this section of Ireland Street, uh, that is requested to be closed. Uh, this is a portion of Ireland Street between ten-twenty and eleven-hundred.
between 1020 and 1100 South Elm Street. This is approximately 25, it's, it's that section between, it's 25 feet wide. You can see it on this map a little easier, kind of see the, the surrounding area. This is approximately 6,338 square feet or .146 acres. The applicant is Jason Pyle with RMX North Carolina 2 LLC. And the RMX North Carolina 2 LLC owns both sides of the, of the street. That makes 100% of the landowners along the street that signed it. In making a determination to close a street, the city must find two, two things to be true. One, that closing the street to vehicular traffic is not contrary to the public interest. And two, that no property owner in the vicinity is deprived of reasonable men, means of ingress or egress. And TRC recommended approval of this request with no conditions. And I can answer any questions that you have at this time.
Do we have any questions?
I do.
Ms. Magg?
As difficult as it was to find generation, I'm not certain. I really looked at this proposed land. I looked at both sides, and I, and I, I drove around Whittington, and I'm not really certain that this illustration that was segmented into little segments was very helpful, because, but I think I was around the right area.
We have a lot of unopened rights of way, or unimproved rights of way in the city of Greensboro. And so a lot of-
You're not going to miss it. I mean-
A lot of street closure requests that, that you see are rights of way that were dedicated but never improved. And this is one of those examples.
Okay.
This may have been a logging road. It might be that old.
Yeah, yeah, no. Okay. But I drove around the whole area, so.
Any other questions? Mr.?
May I make a motion?
Please make a motion.
I would like to make a motion that we close the street.
Excuse me, let us, let us close the public hearing. Now you can make a motion, please.
In regards to PLP24-21, I'd like to make a motion that we close the street.
More seconds.
We have a motion and a second, two seconds, Mr. Engel, Mr. Gilmer, and Mr. Dunning, to close that portion of Ireland Street. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Is anyone opposed? Thank you. That constitutes our meeting, which was rather expedited considering how many items we had to cover. Do we have any items from the planning department?
We don't have any additional items.
Thank you. Do we have any, any items from commissioners?
I, I have some comments to make, because this is technically, technically my last meeting. And, you know, insanely enough that it's been six years of doing this. And so I, I, I hope you will indulge me a moment while I, I say a couple of things and, and thank you all. But, you know, when I started doing this in 2018, I had just met my now wife. You know, and now we are married right before the pandemic started, right? So long as honeymoon ever. My pandemic partner, my quarantine partner. We moved. We now have two kids. We've been through a pandemic. We've been through some, a lot of, you know, very interesting things. And so I, I would be remiss if I didn't thank them for, for giving me the time to do this on a monthly basis. And, you know, I, I will also say that I, I want to thank each and every one of you. I, I have enjoyed my time serving with you. The conversations that we've had and, and the, the banter at times. I, I want to specifically thank Richard Bryson for the expedited agenda, because he pushed for that. So that was what made our, our, our evening a lot faster tonight. There are a couple of other people that I served with that aren't here tonight that I, I do want to thank. In particular, Gene Lester, Janet Mazurko, Ray Trapp, Verner Lawford, and Adam Marshall. I learned something from every single one of them. You know, they had their own way about them, their own way of looking at things and questioning things, and I always appreciated that. The last thing I'm going to leave you with is an anecdote, because I think it's been so fascinating to see the city grow in the last six years. And I'm, I'm really excited to have been a part of that. But I wasn't always on the side of development or, or growth or progress. When I was a high school student in Brownsburg, Indiana, I was a part of a small town that was on the fringe of a large city. And there were growing pains that happened when you're a small town, and there's a highway that comes through, and things just inevitably happen. And at one point, they wanted to build a steel mill in the town of Brownsburg, Indiana. And we fought like heck to get that thing basically denied by the town council. And, you know, they had shown us concepts, and they'd shown us a mill that it was going to be like. And then, to our luck, however you want to put it, that mill blew up at one point during the, you know, and so it was like, you know, our, our points were made even more. And we won. We, that steel mill never came to Brownsburg. But we lost, because the steel mill went up the road to a town called Pittsboro, which has the, the only thing you ever need to know about Pittsboro is from a North Carolina perspective, and those of you who are NASCAR fans, it's where Jeff Gordon was born and raised. So, you know, they got the steel mill, we didn't. And they got 80 great jobs up there, and a mill that's still running today, and the town of Brownsburg didn't. They got the tax revenue, and Brownsburg didn't. And so I've always been appreciative of the fact that I think as a, as a group, we have, we have looked at the larger picture for what's good for the city. We have a lot of things that are in front of us. I've learned a lot being up here, and I, I'm thankful for that time. I want to thank Mike, and Luke, and Andrew, and Nolan, and Brent, and all of the other city staff that have made it possible, and, you know, have hand-delivered these little books to my house on, you know, seemingly a monthly basis for at least the last four and a half years, because the mail decided not to work anymore. So, you know, I, I appreciate that. I, I don't know how many more of these I'll have with you, but since we were ending early, I thought you would give me a moment just to say, thank you. It's been a wonderful journey.
As you can see, Mr. Engel, we're not ready to let go.
And, and I know, and, and we will be missing you. And I just know you didn't mean to leave out Hugh Holston.
I would absolutely say, Hugh, we and I had many conversations together over, over the time, good lord. And, you know, he's one of the chairs, you know, and I was fortunate to be able to, to put Sandra here as a, as the last, my last sort of years of acts. I, I got to nominate Sandra to be chair for the third year in a row. You are the longest-serving chair I've had during half the time. But, but Gene, and then Andrew, and then Hugh were the three chairpeople prior that I served with, and now Sandra. So I've, I've had four. And I, I may be biased. You are probably my favorite. So although it's, it's tough, I, I, and I like you, but Gene, Gene Lester ran a good meeting too. So I, you know, I, I do, I do appreciate that. So.
Thank you.
It's always tough when you actually say something like that, because you do somebody else.
Right, right. Anyone else?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Gilmer?
Uh, yes. I would like to remember Mr. Henry Iverson. I think I met him back in 92 or 93, when it first came on the planning board back then. Tremendous statement, very, very well-known throughout Greensboro. He did a great job at the airport. And anytime he came in front of this committee, he was always very professional. And most of the cases, he won, because he did his homework. He was a great leader for the city of Greensboro. And I would like to send condolences, I guess, from the board to his family, to planning and zoning commission board to his family. But he was a great man. He used to come by my office on cases, and we discussed, and he said, is there any questions, just let me know. If they had a case coming up, he always called me on the phone, whether I talked to him or not. I'd just call him back and tell him I didn't have any question. But he was a great, great man. He will be missed. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for those comments. And he certainly, I think all of us in our professional lives strive to make a difference. And certainly, he made a huge difference in Greensboro. So if we don't have any other comments, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you.